To the February twenty second, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements, Kevin, do you have anything?
I do not.
Jim?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alex, public announcement?
No, I don't.
Okay, the only thing I got is Little League signups, I believe, end of March first. Little League, Abington Little League on Facebook, you can reach them that way. And I believe you can register online this year, so they'll let, contact them, they'll be able to get you all the things you need. And I know softball registrations are now open for the spring too, I'm not sure when they end, but keep an eye out for that. Also, on Facebook's a good way to reach them, that's all I have.
And one more thing I forgot, congratulations to the high school boys' basketball team, state champs.
Yes, good one. So surely champs, unfortunately, that's the best we can do this year.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure they would have won the states should, should they have had the tournament. Any public announcements, does anybody, I'm sorry, public comments, does anybody have anything they want to comment that could be on the agenda? Give me a hand raise or some sort of notification that you want to speak, and I'll let you go. Alright, I'm seeing nothing, I assume nobody has anything, so first up on our agenda is executive session. I'll take a motion at this time to enter into executive session via Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, subsection twenty-three B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel and to return to open session. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, made by Alex, seconded by Jim, we'll do a roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, so we'll go to executive session and we'll be back shortly. Okay, we're back from executive session, Kevin Tachi, I'm just waiting for Mike, Mike Kellaj. Should be in the waiting room, or Michael K. I'm not going to try his last name anymore.
Cool Jay. That soup.
A cool Jay. Michael Cool Jay.
I just did, hopefully he's says delivered but not read yet, so. I don't think he'll object if we move on to vote in the to approve the minutes for February eighth, they were sent out late today, I hope everybody got a chance to read them.
I did, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Not so quick, we're still waiting.
On what?
Mike. Alright, motion, okay, he just text, he's coming on now, so, motion to approve the minutes, second, is there a second?
Yep, second.
Any further discussion on the minutes of February eighth? All those in favor of approving the minutes for February eighth, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, those are approved. Kevin, is he coming on? Mike, are you on now and ready?
I'm here.
Okay, great.
Sorry about that.
No, that's alright, we, in your absence, voted to approve the minutes of February eighth, we assumed you wouldn't have an objection with that.
Nope.
Next up is vote to approve the letter to Governor Baker regarding COVID vaccine availability. This was a letter I drew up to Governor Baker and Secretary Sudders. And I will read it now, put it into the minutes before we discuss it, but Dear Governor Baker and Secretary Sudders, over the past week, couple of weeks, we have become increasingly alarmed at the fact that the town of Abington has been denied COVID nineteen vaccine doses. We understand that the Commonwealth has, has opened mass vaccination sites as well as distributed doses to private companies such as Walgreens and CVS. We are hearing from residents that these sites have either been difficult to get an appointment or are not convenient for our senior population to get to. As you are well aware, senior citizens are most susceptible to the dangerous effects of COVID nineteen. It is our wish to be able to provide these residents with the vaccine as quickly and conveniently as possible. Many of our senior residents have contacted members of this board to express concern for their safety in driving twenty-five plus miles in winter conditions to a mass vaccination site at either Gillette Stadium or Fenway Park. It is our understanding that the Abington EDS has been an improved EDS for many years in accordance and compliance with DPH policies and procedures for the explicit purpose of vaccination distribution. Since the beginning of this terrible pandemic, our Public Health Director and elected officials of our Board of Health have been working tirelessly at the Commonwealth's direction to prepare and implement a vaccine rollout. Abington is a small, neighborly community, we have come to live by the slogan, "One Town, One Family." Governor Baker, over the past year, you have spoken fondly of your father and assisted living. While we are fighting for our fathers, our mothers, our community. We, as elected members of the Board of Selectmen, implore you to provide the Abington Health Department with the vaccine doses they were told they would have, and let them do what they have been preparing tirelessly for, getting the vaccine into the arms of our residents. Signed on behalf of the residents of Abington, Tim Chapin, Alex Benison, Jim Conley, Mike Kay, and Kevin Demazio. Any discussion on that, any, I'm open to any changes, substantive, grammatical?
I think you did a great job on the letter, and I just think it's great, it's perfect, it hits on all the points, and it reinforces a state rep's letter that Representative Sullivan sent, and state senator, and everyone else, so I think it's something that needs to go out as soon as possible. Jim and I were at the rally in Whitman last week, and this is all the social towns got together to express their concerns over the same thing, so I don't have any changes to it, I think it's perfect.
I agree. This is, this system, I've been trying to get an appointment through their system since the day, since Monday, and it's just impossible. You finally think you're getting in, you fill out all the paperwork, only to find out someone beat you to the appointment.
Exactly.
It's, and if it was in the hands of our Board of Health, I probably would have had my shot by now, so I have no idea.
My mother is eighty-five years old in a wheelchair in Onwaka, and it's not convenient to take her to Fenway Park or to Gillette Stadium. Hopefully, at her senior facility, like the governor's father's senior facility, they're gonna be giving them the vaccine. They were scheduled to do it three weeks ago, and then the governor pulled it away from the town of Hanover. So hopefully, that'll be taken care of, it's our seniors that cannot travel to Fenway Park or Gillette Stadium, so something needs to be done locally.
So I'll take a motion just to approve the letter, and it's sending out.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion, secondating, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous by the Board of Selectmen, thank you guys. And if anybody has any grammatical changes, just let Nancy know before tomorrow, I assume she's gonna send that out tomorrow. Scott?
If you guys want to come in and sign it?
Yeah, we have to come in and sign some other stuff, I guess Nancy sent out today, so.
So we'll have this page ready, and then if she has to change anything, she can, but I think it will tomorrow.
Okay, so hopefully everybody can get there to sign it next day or so, thank you guys. Next up is discussion on where to hold future town elections. Scott, you're gonna look into this a little bit as far as all the sites?
Yeah, so a couple of things. First off, you know, I had some issues going on the, the past week, and then it turned out to be school vacation week. So I didn't think, we didn't get together to go out and look at any of the sites. That being said, I did have the conversation with Leanne, with our town clerk, and, and I think I did send over in your packet, you should have got the spreadsheet of what it was costing over at the Emerald Hall?
I don't think I saw that.
Which, you know, the details and stuff, I don't think anywhere that you go will change. But the, the cost over on the Emerald was maybe seventeen hundred dollars or something to that effect. That being said, you know, there, the, the Emerald Hall may not even be available to us again anyways, the Emerald Hall is up for sale. I think that they did want to go up quite dramatically on their prices anyways also. So everybody's sort of looking and, and, and saying, alright, where should we hold the where should we do this, I was, Peter Shaper reached out to me, and as I told you guys last time, that, you know, he'd love for if anybody wants to go and meet with them and look at the different buildings, I think we could narrow it down to just a few of them. The high school being one, obviously. Personally, it's my preference, I think it works best on your elections if they're on a weekend or on a day that there is no school, I think other times then we'd have to make other arrangements and plan it well in advance. But we could do something where, you know, we could have some satellite parking up at the town hall, library, parking lots, and then use the other lots in that area, and maybe come up with some, even a, some sort of a shuttle service. And, and the reason I also look at it, I saw it when we were doing the, you know, we've done the check-in over there for town meeting, and we've also run check-in, similar type of check-in for the EDS site most recently. And it all seems to flow very well, it all seems to work really good, so. That's, that's once I, I, I would urge you guys to maybe reach out to Peter individually and talk about going to visit and stopping in and just taking a look at these when you can. The other one being maybe Beaver Brook, Frollo doesn't make any sense because it it, it does have way too many accessibility issues, and too many for us to overcome. So I would look at those, and the other option would be the Senior Center. And the biggest problem it seems to be with the Senior Center is the fact that the railroad track is very close. And the only issue that was pointed out to me that that could present a problem with the traffic. You know, I don't know, I think I will reach out to Chief Nuttall and to Chief, or Deputy Chief Cutter, give us an opinion on, on all the sites that are available to us out of those ones, and see what they think works better for, you know, traffic, or what they think would have issues with, or not issues with traffic. But they all, they're all different, they're all unique, those, those are the ones that we own and that we have the most control out of. So I think that's the ones that you should focus on, but again, ultimately, the decision will be up to you guys, we just have to make it really relatively soon.
Scott, go ahead. I was just gonna say, what about doing different precincts, you know, like maybe doing the Senior Center, or doing Woodsdale, a couple of different areas throughout the town?
I, I did ask Leanne, that's not preferable, they would prefer not to do that, they, it seems to work best if they have one location. You know, I know bigger, the bigger cities, and, and you know, they always have multiple I've only worked, I know, you know, Duxbury always had one, Whitman's always done it at Town Hall and their auditorium, so I, I can understand why it could be problematic, you just have to have that many more people. Or, you know, the ability for someone to be in charge at each location. But it, it's not, I mean, obviously, it's not something that you, that's out of the question.
Scott, that it was seventeen hundred?
I, I think I sent the spreadsheet along.
It didn't come in the packet, Scott, no.
Well, that's weird.
Do you want to send it now?
No. But, it's my recollection, it was about seven, and that was just the hall setup, the setup fee and the hall usage fee. And I believe you provided some refreshments, probably coffee and maybe some snacks or lunch.
Scott, quick question, Scott, one of the complaints, obviously, especially from the, the older population, is to walk back to the gym. Is there any reason we use the gym as opposed to the front area of the high school? We have that nice big open, you know, both cafeterias and stuff, you?
Yeah, and I did talk to Peter about that, it, it is a bit of a security thing, it's more at, at least at the, if we're in the back, and, and I suppose if it was on a Saturday or something, then it wouldn't make a difference.
Yeah, I understand.
Otherwise, if you, if you were doing anything and school was in session, it wouldn't be good.
That, I, yeah, I get that.
And I think also right now, because we, we want to find the permanent place for this, I think right now, because, because of COVID issues, that's their cafeteria, that's where the kids eat, that's, you know, I don't know that we want that in there, but I, again, that's more of a thing, I think we could reach out to Peter, or I think you guys could probably individually, like I said, I think it, I think it's best for you to have eyes on this and maybe do a walkthrough. To try and do it as a group is, you know, that's just asking for pain, it's just.
Going, going through a couple of elections at the different places, I mean, at the high school, I mean, they had to, you know, add additional handicap accessible spots on the backside. I know there was complaints in the gym, one of the times it was really hot in the air, the, the workers were extremely hot with the, no air conditioning. I did ask, again, like Mike was saying about the front, and we, we talked about that, but that seems not to be accessible. Some of the elections, like on the town elections, there's sports going on in those fields as well, so it gets pretty hectic there. I know this, there's a myriad of concerns at both places.
And, and when I did talk to Pete, we discussed specifically, you know, they would have to schedule, you know, the sporting events or anything like that around this, and not have field use that day, we would have to add you know, a, a section of, of extra handicap parking, probably extra senior parking. Again, like I said, I think any of the workers, we would ask them to probably park up at Town Hall and we would shuttle them down.
I know, with that election they had in the gym, they were using, there was like a little side storage room for like gym equipment that they were using as their break area. It was very small, I mean, I think they threw a couple of tables on there for them to give like just a little bit of break, but it was really, wasn't anything special for workers that are sitting there all day, you know, helping out, so.
Yeah, there's, I mean.
Did Peter say?
We done for that, too.
Did Peter have an opinion on Beaver Brook?
Again, there were, there were Beaver Brook had some issues that were, I think mostly communication and electrical issues as far as you know, not a lot of outlets and not a lot of you know, maybe plugs for computers or whatever, but again, those are ones that we feel we can overcome, if you were to look at Beaver Brook and think that that was a, an optimal site. Yeah, I think, you know, we, we have enough time right now that we could say, alright, let's, this is what we have to do that day, and to get extra power out there, or get power strips, or and again, if we know we're gonna do it, and there's a possibility that there's some heating or cooling issues, we can make arrangements for that, too.
So what does it cost if we were to use Beaver Brook for custodians, or what other expenses do we have?
Well, you have your details, you, you know, so whatever your police details.
We have that at?
You're gonna have that no matter what.
Right.
Whatever, I think Leanne probably would provide some sort of, you know, some coffee and, and stuff like that, but you're gonna do that no matter where you are.
Yeah.
Your other fees would be, yeah, your custodial, they have a couple custodians there for the duration, and the cleanup, you know, setup and cleanup.
So if we're gonna vote on this, probably at the next meeting or the meeting after that, could we get a spreadsheet showing what we're paying now? And what it would be at one of our schools, because it's probably gonna be at one of the schools or the Senior Center?
Yeah, I think either way, I think you guys have to choose anything other than Emerald, because I just think that we're not gonna be able to act there.
Well, I think everyone knows my feeling on that anyway, so. I've been pushing Beaver Brook for years, and I, I personally think it's the ideal location, there's plenty of parking, there's plenty of parking up near the door for seniors and handicap, and there's plenty of parking for people that want, I, I mean, areas for people that want to campaign. I, I just think, I think it's a good spot, I've heard there's electrical issues there, but like you said, we could overcome those. So what I'd like to know is what are our costs to do it at Emerald Hall, to pay the seventeen hundred compared to what it costs to use Beaver Brook or the high school? The snacks, the food, and paying the employees, we have no matter where we go, paying the detail, so that's not it. I want to compare it to the seventeen hundred we were paying Emerald Hall compared to one of our own facilities.
Well, I mean, I don't believe that you're gonna have a building charge, you're gonna only have I mean, you're.
And that's exactly my point.
You're definitely not gonna have a building charge.
Right.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll ask Peter what, what the custodian fees will be.
We're not paying seventeen hundred dollars for two custodians for the day. So, that's exactly my point.
Yeah.
So.
Alright, we can do that, but in the meantime, if you guys, I, I think it'd be great, even if, if, if you can't get there during the week to look at it inside, at least kind of take a ride down to those sites and the Senior Center, and then when we meet next, I'll have the numbers for you, and I'll have a comment from probably mostly just Deputy Chief Cutter on, on any traffic issues or what he might think would be an issue if.
Beaver Brook would be good.
I think the Senior Center would be good, too, if, if we had to do some more electrical work there also. That's a good area, plenty of parking. The train could be an issue.
The biggest issue that Leanne brought up to my attention on that was the train.
Yeah.
And I, to be quite honest with you, on a, if, the way things are now, if you're having a weekend electric, the train shouldn't be a problem because it's not running, so.
You're gonna have a police detail there as well, so, I mean, I don't chief, but.
Yeah, and I'll, we'll get the, the recommendation from them on that.
Beaver Brook would also be good, because you could, you could use one as, you know, one-way entrance and one-way exit, too, you know?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, with just letting them, maybe the seniors go all the way down and loop around the school, you know, parking and whatnot, but.
What's, what's the air conditioning like at the Senior Center?
I believe they have it, I would assume they do have it.
So it's better than all the other schools? As far as that.
Just there, I guess if it just, if we were concerned about it being a, you know, excessively hot day, I think the other part of it is, is we could put in, you know, we, you know, probably some fans and get the air moving, put in some large-sized fans, we can rent them, they're not that expensive to get air moving over at Beaver Brook, if you thought that was better. The other part of, you know, and I'll get Marty to sort of chime in, because I, I think we'll still be under, at least at the very next election, under some sort of COVID restriction. You know, that, that may make one better than the other, I, I don't think so, though, I think that they, you know, they've showed and we'll still be able to do the, the, the balloting, I, I think we'll still be able to do absentee balloting. I don't believe that they'll have, at least on the next election, and once COVID is clear, further elections, I don't think that you'll have necessarily the early voting. Certainly not for just a town election, but you'll have, I think, absentee ability. So maybe people, you know, again, if, if we're still in the COVID restriction, we could also, you know, push for that again.
I'd also like to hear from Leanne if she could speak on behalf of the employees, if they had a preference on, on which government, I mean, that could help break any tie if I have in my mind, you know?
So should we put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, we have to, you know, I think it's best to get this decided ASAP.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, so we'll plan that for what's, uh, next meeting, March eighth, I believe?
I believe you're right.
Yep, so we'll plan that for March eighth's agenda, thank you. Up next is to vote to approve the sale of bonds, Sonia, you had, you want to speak on what you need from us today?
Hi, everybody. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I think, I did one of the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, we already did the public comment, but Jason, go ahead, you can unmute yourself and speak, sorry, Sonia.
Hi, sorry, this is actually Nicole here with Jason. Good, thanks, I was just curious, are there any other locations that are being considered that aren't owned by the town? Besides what you guys have discussed today?
I'll speak on behalf of the board, and they can stop me if I'm wrong, but I think all five of us have the preference to keep it on town property. I don't think there's really any other serious consideration for any other property at this time, and like I said, if the board wants to stop me, then I don't, I'm not saying something might come out next week, but.
The only other location in town would be the Knights of Columbus, I don't, I can't think of any other, Emerald Hall, Knights of Columbus, or a town-owned building.
Yeah, and I want to trust the, I mean, the Emerald Hall is on the market, it's for sale, I certainly wouldn't want to schedule an election there and have it not be able to happen for any reason, so. I, I would personally prefer to keep it on town property.
Okay, thank you.
Dyson? Anything else? Okay, sorry, Sonia, about that, go ahead.
That's okay, thanks for having me, everybody. Tonight, for the bond vote, what you'd be voting is to approve the sale of two point zero eight five million in bonds that we just issued. And these are for projects that have been approved over the last two or three town meetings. So we've got the fire feasibility study in there, a fire engine, an ambulance, we've got school security upgrades, the Central Street Bridge repair that was just passed this fall. Police siding, all of those projects that have recently been approved are being officially long-term bonded right now. So we got a really good rate, the true interest cost was one point one four eight percent, which is fabulous. No, it's still expensive to borrow money even when you get a good rate like that. Now, the average rate is just over two percent, so there's, you know, fancy bond calculations to come up with all these numbers, but the bottom line is, we got an excellent rate, you know, everyone knows that interest rates are really low right now, and we had considered doing another short-term borrowing this year, but with the interest rates being so low, not knowing what was gonna happen in the next year, we wanted to go ahead and lock in these rates now and take advantage of them. And it turns out that we, we definitely hit the market at the right time. Part of the good rate that we got is that we have, our bond rating was affirmed by Standard and Poor's. So our bond rating is double A with a stable outlook, and that has been our rating since before I came here in two thousand and fifteen. Part of the reason we have such a good bond rating is because Standard and Poor's has seen over the years that our budgeting practices have always been conservative. They are, they like that our economy appears very strong, especially with the Route eighteen expansion and all the expansion that we believe that will bring to town. They think that our liquidity is in a really strong position, and the fact that we're reviewing our fiscal policies right now, with Scott coming on board, was one of the things that he wanted to take a look at, so he and I and Sue have been reviewing those and kind of getting some ideas of what we want to present to the Board of Selectmen to review and approve. And they, they were happy to hear that we wanted to strengthen the policies that we already have in place. They also appreciated that we put money into stabilization last year when we knew that the pandemic was going to potentially hit us pretty hard. They, they liked that we were proactive in making sure that we were putting money aside so that we could meet our obligations and not experience the type of recession that some towns might if they didn't have that flexibility. So overall, they were, they were pretty happy with everything we were able to tell them about town and how our economy's going and how we are managing the financial position of the town. So these bonds are ranging from five years to twenty years, depending on the project, what we're, what we're paying for. You know, something like the school security is only five years because security equipment, really, you'd expect it to last five years, probably more, but you can't borrow for more than that. Whereas something like a new bridge is a twenty-year borrowing project. Whereas something like a new bridge is a twenty-year borrowing project. Um, all of these projects that we borrowed for are tax levy projects, which means they are not excluded from debt. So they're part of our standard operating budget. So the vote language should have been forwarded to you. And so the board would just need to review that and take the vote as written in the, in the document. And then as uh you're aware, the bond documents need to be signed tomorrow morning so that I can send them out to our investors. Does anyone? Yep.
Should they read that whole document or is there a way that they could paraphrase that?
Is it possible to put it on the screen?
Maybe.
It is a long vote.
Tim, I just, you again, if, if you didn't see it before, but can you put that word document up on your screen to them?
Um, if you give me a minute, I can try.
Or, or it's either, I mean, it just seemed to be very difficult to read that all.
What word document was it?
I just, I think Nancy sent it last week, or maybe I sent it last week, but I just resent it. And it says it's Selectman Vote, Abington Board Bond.
I just got it, so everyone should have it. It's in your uh town email. Yeah, you only have to know how to do it though, Kevin.
Yeah.
Oh, you're the co-host.
Kevin, why don't we email it to you and you put it up there?
Sonia, did you send it to me? I'm, I'm pulling it up. I'll share it.
Okay.
Perfect.
You're welcome. Okay, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see, uh, Scott as the clerk will sign this after you guys take the vote. And you can see that it lists the amount of the bonds. And the interest rates by year. So you're voting that the bonds are approved and confirmed that they'll be payable February fifteenth of the year and in the principal amounts and interest rates as shown. Further voting that the bonds maturing on February fifteenth of thirty-three, thirty-seven and forty-one are term bonds and will be subject to mandatory redemption schedules. Further voting that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, we prepared a, an official statement to be distributed to the investors. And then I will, a lot of this is just boilerplate. About how we can redeem them, SEC rules. Uh, I have to prepare uh post issuance compliance procedures and continuing disclosure, which basically means I provide them with our audit and I make sure that we make all of our debt payments. And then finally certifying that the votes were taken at an open meeting available to the public. There was no secret ballot. Et cetera, et cetera.
Would someone like to make that motion to approve those bonds as displayed and written?
I made the motion to approve the bonds as displayed and written.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the bonds? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Sonia, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll be in to sign those.
Tomorrow, we need them tomorrow.
Yeah, as early as possible.
Uh, probably wake up around one, two o'clock. That's good.
He's still good because Mike says it.
Yeah, Scott, you're gonna let me in?
Yep.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that, Mike.
My other keys are halogen. I don't think they'd appreciate that.
Do it.
A healthcare update. Scott, did you want to provide that? Is that you or?
Actually, I asked Sonia to stick around and, and uh I'll explain that one with this. Uh, and basically, um, what we wanted to go over is, you know, it's, it's a large item in our budget is our, our annual expenses for healthcare. And, um, you know, Sonia and her department and, and all of us actually, you know, we work hard on finding ways and trying to reduce those expenses and, and all expenses, but, um, you know, recently we spent a lot of time with our consultant on this and, and we were able to um get a reduced premium, but um, at the same time, we were looking at, um, you know, the, the savings that we've had over the years since Abington did leave Mayflower. And, um, Alex had wanted to see what those savings were, so I asked Sonia if she would just kind of come on and talk about that.
Yeah, so our consultants did a review of our premiums compared to Mayflower's premium since we left the group. Uh, and I believe that's been forwarded to you. So through fiscal year twenty-two, which I think is the version that was sent over to you, or I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty, we're not in twenty-two yet. Uh, we've saved a total of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the town and employees. We split that with the employees based on the premium cost sharing, so it's primarily seventy, thirty, seventy percent town, thirty percent employees. So it does vary by plan. That's where most of our people are. Adding in the fiscal year twenty-one figures, uh, brings our total savings to eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars over the time period that we uh, have been on our own. I believe there was a concern about the figures not including the senior plan, and so I ran some quick figures. Um, you know, we had, when we looked at this, we were focusing mainly on the self-insured aspect of it, and so that's why we didn't include those plans. Uh, but it is a valid point that we pay for the senior plans as well, and so if we want to take a look and see really what we've saved, we need to include those. And so adding those in, uh, the last couple of years, the, our senior plans are priced higher than Mayflower's. But we're talking about thirty thousand dollars that the town pays more than we would have if we had been with Mayflower. So when you add that in, um, through the end of fiscal year twenty-one, instead of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in savings, it's seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So it's not a drastic difference, uh, but an important difference that we should note. Um, about half of the reserve that we have right now in the self-insured trust fund, which is eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Half of that is for IBNR, which is incurred but not reported claims. So on June thirtieth, you have a certain number of claims for office visits, hospital stays, prescription coverage, whatever the case may be that has been incurred, you know, someone actually went to the doctor, went to the hospital, but we haven't been billed for it or paid for it yet. That lag is what the IBNR is, and we have to make sure that we have enough money in the trust fund to cover those expenses. Uh, you know, if we don't, then we're in the red. So we have about half of our trust fund balance is for IBNR. The other half is a surplus that allows us to, uh, you know, if we have a really terrible claims year, we can help it uh absorb some of that. Uh, or we can use it in strategic ways to level out uh rate increases, something like that. And we've spent the last few years with, uh, building up those reserves. So not only have we built up reserves for the trust fund, but we've also been able to save almost eight hundred thousand dollars in town, or in town and employee expenses just in premiums. Uh, so I, it's, there's a risk, of course, being self-insured, uh, but in these few years, it has shown to be a good fiscal decision uh to, to have left. Now, there's always the question of what we want to do in the future, and that's something that, that Scott has a heavy hand in. Uh, and I work with him closely and with our consultants to take a look at rates, get quotes, those types of things to make sure that we are in the right position for the town. Uh, and I know that we've been trying to find other partners as well that might want to pair up with the town of Abington to help reduce our risk as being self-insured. So I guess I'll end there and I can respond to questions or as conversation moves.
I have a couple of questions. Um, I've spoken to somebody at Mayflower and they dispute the numbers that our consultant has given. They also, um, oh, I wanted to know what the IBNR was, and you just explained that. So that leaves basically four hundred and thirty thousand in our reserve, correct? So if we had a major catastrophe, like uh twenty of our employees ended up in the hospital on ventilators with COVID, say, that's gonna wipe that out.
Necessarily. We have stock loss coverage, which is a, it's reinsurance is another way of explaining it. Uh, once a, a claim goes above a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that insurance kicks in. And that insurance policy that we pay for as part of our premiums covers what's over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that does mitigate the risk. Uh, but again, if we had that many people with really high claims, we would likely see a higher increase the following year just because of that, yeah.
Whereas Mayflower uh currently has about thirty-five million in their reserve, so we were with them. And, and let me just state for the record here, and I, and I spoke with Scott and I've spoken to other people. I want to save the town money, and if we're saving money now, then I don't want to go back to Mayflower. But if we can save money with Mayflower or our own group, whatever, that's what I want to do. But I just want to make sure that we're comparing apples with apples, and I don't think we are completely. And the other issue I have is, um, the consulting fee, which is included in Mayflower, and that's not on the spreadsheet. Um, the wellness program, do we offer a wellness program uh like Mayflower did that was very successful? What I would like to do, and I mentioned this to Scott, I would like to meet with Mayflower and you, Sonia, and Scott, and possibly myself next week, and just get their take on the numbers. And if we're saving money, then we continue doing what we're doing. But I would just like to meet with Mayflower and actually find out if these numbers, if they agree with their numbers. Because this is what I tried to do in two thousand eighteen or seventeen, and it didn't happen. And the consultant and the previous town manager was going around telling all the employees that the rates were going up twenty-six percent. And technically they were right, but that was for the most expensive policy. They never said that on the average, it's only going up ten percent. And I believe we went up ten percent that year also. So I want the actual facts out there and I want, I want the best for the town, but I want to compare apples with apples, and I would like to set up a meeting next week via Zoom or in person, whatever uh you, Scott, want to do, but I'd like to do that with the representative from Mayflower, if that's possible.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, Sonia will tell you, she actually did already have um, a conversation with Mayflower today to discuss the numbers, just to make sure we were uh comparing apples to apples, and, and she did make those adjustments, so. Um, we did, as soon as you said that, I, I did reach out to Sonia, and she reached right out to our consultant, and, and again, they would be happy to um, to have that conversation too. So I think we could absolutely do that next week and have some, uh, probably a Zoom meeting would be best with, you know, yourself and, and, and we'll get, uh, whoever wants to jump in from Mayflower and our consultants, but we are, um, you know, we're, what we're trying to do is make sure that everybody has a good, um, a good plan. Um, you know, we want to make sure we're taking care of everybody properly. And also saving the town and the employees as much money as we can while doing it, and, um, we're spending a lot of time right now, we're trying to find some other communities to join in with us. Uh, for the sake of, of doing, just as you say, is having that larger pool, because having, you know, obviously having a, a thirty-five million dollar uh pool is a lot better than having a, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar pool of money. Um, so we, we have reached out and we're continuing to reach out to other municipalities who are in a same position. Um, and it's not that, you know, again, we'll be happy to talk to Mayflower, um, see what they have to offer us and, and make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
And Sonia, when I was uh speaking, you started to say, when I mentioned the consultant fee, is that in here?
There is no extra consultant fee. That's paid by the insurance carrier, so it's, it's considered part of the premium, so there's nothing additional to add there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sonia, how much is in the trust fund?
Right now, as of the end of December, there's eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Thank you.
But half of that is.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sonia. Anybody else on that? Okay, so next up is the clothing bin collection uh policies. Um, Scott, we just asked you to send us uh what could be policies. Now, we're gonna recommend these to the Board of Health, I believe, and they're the ones actually implementing them.
Yeah, it, it, it's, because if you guys want to implement it, um, it would end up having to be a bylaw. We'd have to go to town meeting and then you're probably going to have it monitored by the Board of Health. The Board of Health implements it, they just have to have a public, and I don't have to tell you, they have to have a public meeting and they can discuss it and make it a regulation, and that's it. So it's a lot easier and ultimately they're gonna be the enforcement agent on it. So Marty, uh, and I think Alex might be on this meeting now, Alex Hagerdy from the Board of Health. But Marty, um, has, these were actually put together in, in, you know, response to this by Marty Golightly, our, um, Health Director. He is putting it on the agenda for their next meeting, uh, doesn't anticipate there being any problems with it, but if there's anything that you guys are in it or something else that you wanted to change or something, you know, that you don't feel is addressed, you know, uh, by all means, please add in there, or if you want to do it a different way. I'm all ears.
My recommendation is we leave it to the Board of Health. It's really their purview. I think the only reason we kept bringing it up is because we, we were getting phone calls. We were getting emails. It, it was an issue, so, so we just wanted to, to address it. And, uh, the Board of Health's been great, so I don't see any, any reason.
What Marty sent here is uh perfect. Um, I don't think we need a vote on that.
Unless we want to change anything, does any, did anybody see anything in there they were thinking about changing?
No, it was very well-written. Kudos to Marty.
Yes, exactly.
On top of everything else he's doing.
Yeah. And, and he did actually, and it was my fault for not getting to this board, um, sooner, but he did actually send those out of, probably a month or so ago. Uh, so he has been on it and he, like I said, he will put it on their agenda. I think he's planning on it for their next meeting.
Right. But I don't think they need to come out on that as far as a motion goes or anything like that. So next up would be to open the warrant for special and annual town meeting and request delay to May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, the, um, the bylaw requires that, um, we hold a meeting in, um, in May. All right, was it the? It actually, it requires that we, the first Monday in April, and we're gonna continue it to May, so, um, I think that that will be your motion, and I hopefully, I don't see any issue with having it in May at this point. We did it last year. The. The The vote that you had to have a quorum at seventy five would stand For that meeting, I think The discussion or the thoughts that you have to decide, I think we, you know, we'll call to have it at that location at the high school. You know, and then you can decide whether you wanna do an indoor or an outdoor meeting. Most towns seem to be sticking with what they did last year. If they did an outdoor meeting, they're doing an outdoor meeting. If they did an indoor meeting like we did, they're going forward with that. Again, if we do an indoor meeting, we'll set up, assuming, you know, we'll set up the gymnasium On the off shot that we go over our Numbers and and need the backup room. But we do have to open the warrant. And my anticipation on is the warrant would end up closing. I think the first Very much April. The last meeting in March or the first, maybe it was the first one in April.
So our first vote would be to change the date of time meeting.
I think you have to vote to open the warrant and open town meeting for The first Monday in April, and then your second vote will be to continue it to the I think you have to, I think you have to vote to open it on the date because the bylaw says that's the date you'll open it.
So the motion would be to open the warrant and
Open the, to motion to open the annual and special town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting To be held on the first Monday in April and to be continued to May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Before we do anything else, I I see someone smarter than me raising their hand, so I'm gonna yield to Sean to find out.
Thank God he's on.
Hi, guys. Sean Riley, I'm just listening in as town moderator. I don't know if that's the right motion to actually set up the town meeting for that first week in April and continue it, cuz I don't want, you know, I don't want people to show up at that town meeting in April only for us to say we're not really having a meeting. I think by statute, you guys just have the authority to set the town meeting date. Our bylaw calls for a date. That was set a couple of years ago. So I think Your motion would be just to declare what date you wanna set town meeting. In addition to opening the warrant. I'm not town council. And, you know, if if I'm wrong, you guys can have a subsequent vote later. But it might be easier to do it my way than setting the date and then try to undo it.
That's how we've done in years past, Sean. I know that.
Do we have to state when we're closing the warrant?
I think so.
So the motion would be to open the warrant For the special and annual town meeting.
Be held on May twenty
May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. And the warrant to be closed on.
We need to put a time in there too.
Yeah, I would suggest you take, say that the time, date and location, you guys can subsequently change it before the warrant gets issued. But you could Right now, say that, you know, the the town meeting on Monday, the twenty fourth at seven PM at Abington High School.
I'd say we'd wanna close that warrant then. Your meeting on the twenty second of March Or the twelfth of April.
I would say the twelfth of April.
Okay.
Will I need to re pull back my second?
So my motion is to open the warrant for the special and annual town meeting to be held At Abington High School on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one At seven PM and close the warrant on April twelve.
Yep, that's on Monday. Yep.
Okay, so that motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, that's your answer, Mr. Sean. Thank you very much.
Can I just mention one other thing, Mr. Chairman? Related to town meeting, just to let you know, Scott and I had a brief conversation about whether we should meet indoors or meet outdoors, cuz a lot of towns having the same discussion. And at this point in time, I don't see any reason to change what we've been doing. Unless you guys became aware of some sort of large crowd gathering for, you know, for a particular issue. But we have the capability to utilize the auditorium with overflow into the gym. If that got filled, we would have to move to an outdoor. Our only concern was if there was a If the board wanted to have an outdoor meeting, it obviously can't be on a Monday night. And we obviously have to make make plans and rent some certain equipment, whether it's chairs or tents or whatever. But unless you guys tell me otherwise, I think we're all kind of focusing on how we've done it in the past with the COVID policies and protocols.
As long as we're ready for overflow and we're not turning people away. I mean, I I wanna be able to fit a lot more than seventy five people, you know.
Right, and we'll be following up with With Marty, because we were able to fit about ninety, ninety five people in the gym two meetings ago. I'm not in the gym, in the auditorium. With our seating policies and then with the gym, we could set up another fifty, sixty chairs, seventy chairs, maybe. So, you know, again, if we anticipated that size crowds, that's how much we'd set it up for. If we did max out And there isn't enough room for people, no matter, even if COVID wasn't in play. I I would not be able to move forward with the meeting, but I I don't anticipate that issue will arise, like I said, unless something comes onto your warrant that's gonna bring, you know, three hundred people. Then we'll talk.
Well.
Oh, well.
Well, you have a mind, Scott.
That's it. Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Kevin wants to do an outdoor meeting.
Maybe we could do an outdoor meeting before the indoor special town meeting. How about that?
Meet outdoors prior to the town meeting.
Town manager report.
All right, well, I think you got a pretty good idea of what we've been marking on at town all the last couple of weeks from the agenda. Vaccine issues continue to vex us, obviously. The, you know, obviously, i- if nothing else, we wanna be able to handle Taking care of our seniors. It's very frustrating. I know I spent a lot of time in in the last community that I worked in Preparing for this sort of thing, fifteen years, easy, working on having a game plan for a pandemic. And every town did the same thing, including Abington. And when it came time to implement that game plan, you could tell that, you know, Everybody and all the players involved had had it down to a science and Worked it out and and they really stepped up and and showed that they could deal with it. So it was very frustrating when they pulled the vaccines away from us. And again, we'll continue to advocate for it, at least to try and get To to take care of our most vulnerable population. So that being said, you know, we'll get your letter out and and during, while you guys were at your, at the rally. At that same time, I was on a conference call with the Mass Municipal Managers Association. And we were really discussing the same issue and a letter has gone out from us and from that association. You know, Hating the same thing is that, you know, we 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 wanna be able to deal with our own as much as possible. In town hall, we had a closure last week, as I let you know, there was a positive COVID case. Cleaned up town hall. Everybody's back to work. Everybody's healthy. Arkham Wood, everybody's okay. We're still doing appointment or highly strongly encouraging appointments. Again, if anybody needs anything, call, call, email, whatever you need to do. But we'll we'll get you in if we, if you need to get there, we'll meet you at the door, we'll make arrangements for you to drop something at a Dropbox or use our drive through Window. Or, you know, if if we have to, we'll bring you in. We have places where we can meet with everybody and Meeting rooms that we can sit in that keeps everybody safe. Signing project is set to start finally at the Abington Police Department. And so that's kind of exciting that the worst weather is here and they're ready to get going. Good luck for that. Police chief search, I'm working on the RFP. It should be done and I'll have it, hopefully, the end of next week. Expecting it to cost about twenty thousand dollars. And that will include, that'll get us a search firm. There aren't a lot of them out there. MRI is one. Badge Quest is another one, Bernie Lynch. So there's a few that I know of that I've dealt with or know people have dealt with them. We'll get a copy of the RFP out to them. We only have to solicit three quotes with the with the procurement law, so that's what we're gonna do. We'll get it out at least to three people. If they respond and they're interested, I think I'll bring them to you. I'll let the board meet with them. I'll have, you know, ask them some questions. We'll review what their technical response to the RFP is. And then, you know, together, I think we can select one firm to do the search for us. The search, there were two prices when I got the estimates. The second price, the twenty thousand price includes them doing the assessment in assessment center. So it's not just helping us recruit and and come down with some candidates, but they'll actually bring on three Professional police chiefs who are not affiliated, as is required by the charter. And those, they will assist us in doing the assessment and then give a report to me. So my thought would be, if I have that out by the end of the week. Probably let it, it'll probably hang out there for at least two weeks, three weeks max. And then I should have somebody or at that, whatever the following meeting is, have some candidates for the Search front of the board. The other RFP that I'm finishing up and and actually, most of the work was done by Angela And Marty down in the Health Department was for the trash collection. We've got it out to town council as soon as I get it back from town council. And we're hoping to talk in the month Thursday about it. I'll get that out. Again, it's not under, it's it's exempt from thirty B, so the process can be a little bit quicker. But once I get some numbers back from them, I intend to get the working group for that trash committee To get together just to kind of review it and review what we're doing. So hopefully, I'll have some more answers on that As we get into March, because we have to make a determination on that. Because the contract ends the end of June. As Sonia had mentioned, we're still working on Our financial policies for the town. They'll replace the ones that you currently have in your selectmen handbook. Right now, we've got it through the Capitol Committee. They've looked at it and they're pretty happy with it. And we're gonna, you know, roll them up to financing to you. It's just a few more Issues that Sonia and Sue and myself have to work out first. And nothing big, but we'll get them to you. And that's it.
Anybody have anything for the town manager?
Scott, the CARES Act, have we had any reimbursements yet or what's the update on that?
Sue, have you gotten anything? I know you got our first reimbursement. I don't know if you've gotten a reply for the second one yet or not.
We got the first reimbursement that Alex brought in for two hundred and seventy seven thousand. I've put in for five Different packages for reimbursement. They've come back with some questions, most of it school department related and the school has been very upfront with why they made certain purchases. But we have not done anything and I Emailed them probably on five occasions to ask them where we stand with our reimbursements. And I haven't gotten anything back on where we're at. They and the questions that they had that we responded to, so I have no idea where we stand with that. And if anybody knows anybody in Plymouth County Retirement System or Plymouth Plymouth County cares That can find out for us, that'd be great, but I I have emailed. And I'm, obviously, I'm only emailing to the submission website or email, so I I don't have any contacts with anybody there To know exactly where we stand.
Matt Hanley is on and he's one of the assistant treasurers. So Matt, if you can hear me, if you could check into that tomorrow and let Sue know or let me know.
What do we look at for the the five packages that are out there? Looks like a rough number that we have looking for reimbursement.
About one point seven million dollars. Actually, I have Actually, want me to look at it. I have my flash drive with me and I can give you an actual number if you give me two seconds.
And Matt, if you're still on, could you unmute yourself?
Do we have to unmute them? Let me see if I can find them. Okay.
He probably fell asleep during the town manager report.
Probably did, but I will follow up with him or Tom O'Brien tomorrow morning.
Okay, so one point nine Four nine is what I've requested so far.
And we, do we buy, we have a, we bought a Tahoe through that. Did we buy any other cars through the CARES Act?
We bought two.
Jack money. We bought two. What was the other one?
One was for the fire department to do their Their assessments and they literally put it just COVID, they're keeping track of Their logs to make sure that they can prove that there's COVID related. And the other one was for the Board of Health, so that they can get their vaccinations and their tests and things back and forth to whatever locations they were doing at.
That one's an Equinox.
An Equinox?
Yeah.
Okay, that's utilized for the vaccines in town back and forth. Scott, I know I talked to you, there was there was a comment on Facebook about someone looking for dog tags and how to get them. Do we have anything maybe on the town site or we could put up, like if people are looking for, you know, different things like that, contact, you know? Maybe just a generic thing?
Yeah, I'll double check, but I thought we did have something on there. Basically, I know at one point, my message was on there saying It it might have gotten bumped with other things, but it basically said that it's, you know, anything you need, call us, email us, we'll make arrangements to meet with you. And I'll reiterate that, that and I don't, is it a Specific time of year for dog tags? Is that what, is it renewable?
Anywhere first, yeah.
All right, yeah, so I'll 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 put that maybe up on the top banner too, or I'll talk to Wayne about making sure that it's Highly noticeable. I'm hoping that relatively soon. You know, we're we're, you know, maybe if there not another surge after February vacation week. That, you know, we can get back to Just letting people come in. I mean, again, certain most times of the year, it isn't super busy there, but You know, we're gonna be a a call I'll make after I've talked to Marty.
Kevin, just to reiterate. Of course, we're in a, in a forum where Scott might not remember, but we do have all the phone numbers on the front door. So if somebody comes to the front door, they have what department they can call, when they need something. So if somebody came in for First certificates today, I'm like, you need to call the number, they'll answer you. You give them the information you need and they will provide it for you and be right out here to to give you what documents you're looking for. So we're not preventing people from getting their business done.
In the the drive up window, can that be used for anything in town hall or is that kinda? It could, I'm gonna just pull up there or is it more specific?
We actually, sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Oh, no, I mean, I I don't think we'd want people to just Pull up and drop something off, but I think if we knew that they were coming. If they, if they, you know, also didn't want to use, cuz we have a Dropbox out front too. So if somebody wanna drop off building permits and stuff, we'd encourage them to use that. But if it was something, you know, if they wanna drop off money, we would probably say, yeah, you can go ahead and Go to that drive up window. But we wouldn't want people just to pull up to the drive up window and with a A little more information.
And if and if anybody wants to drop off money, I'd be happy to take it there for them.
You guys are down on exit six.
They haven't been, they haven't been turned away, they haven't been turned away, I can guarantee you that.
All right.
There's a sign, there's three signs actually throughout the the town hall parking lot that says if you have business and it doesn't require you to come inside, you can drop it off at the drive through window and they're they're taking it and dispersing it to the per departments.
That's good, I mean, I'd like to see that it's being used, we put some money into fixing it and it's glad to see it being used perfect times, well, you know. Maybe you could put it on the Facebook uh site, Scott?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, I I posted the message on there, again, I mean, yeah, it's a, they disappear, so I'll put it out again, you know. I get, I get so many likes on all of my posts.
You're getting their baby steps.
I'm there, you'll be as big as pizza boys.
Jesus.
Anything else for the town manager?
I have to have a competition with him about pizza dough, okay?
When we get back to normal, we will have a big giant pizza dough.
There you go.
Anything else or emotion?
Motion to close, time to close our meeting.
Rejourn.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any for a discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, guys, thank you, everybody.